Okay, our second meeting of tonight is the Urbana City Council. Will the clerk please call the roll?
City council members Ammons.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Hazen.
Here.
Jacobson.
Here.
Miller. Roberts. Wu.
Here.
Mayor Marlin.
Here. Before we begin, I'd like to welcome Chief Chuck Los. This is his first day on the job, so we're very happy to have him here. And you're free to head home to Peoria if you would like, or you're welcome to stay. Next on the agenda is approval of minutes from the previous meetings. July 9th, 2018, which was a special meeting, August 20th, 2018, and August 27th, 2018, a special meeting. Is there a motion?
I move approval of these three sets of minutes.
I'll second approval of these three sets of minutes.
Moved by Eric, seconded by Dean. Are there any corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that motion passes. There are no additions to the agenda? Okay. Public input. Does anyone wish to address the Urbana City Council? There are yellow cards to fill out in the back of the room. Okay. We do have a proclamation for the library. So, Library Director Celeste Shout will join me, please. This is a proclamation. Whereas, a library card is the most important school supply of all, and whereas libraries play an important role in the education and development of children, and whereas library programs serve students of all ages, from early literacy to homework help to GED classes, and whereas libraries empower all people to pursue their interests, discover their passions, and achieve their highest potential as learners and citizens, and whereas library staff bring communities together, creating welcoming and inclusive spaces for students of all backgrounds to learn together, and whereas libraries are constantly transforming and expanding their services to meet the needs of the communities they serve, and whereas libraries promote equity, making digital technology and information equally accessible to all. Now, therefore I, Diane Wolf-Marlin, Mayor of the City of Urbana, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2018 as Library Card Sign-Up Month in the City of Urbana, Illinois, and I encourage everyone to sign up for their own library card today. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thanks. We do have a member of the public who wishes to speak.
Evening.
Good evening.
My name is Jacqueline Curry. I am a homeowner in the Carver Park subdivision in Champaign. My concern is, I received the information a couple of weeks ago regarding the annex that's going to be put there right beside my house, and I have some real concerns about that. I grew up in that house, and the traffic and the possibility of the homes being torn down really bothers me, and I just want to know what is, get some input on what's going on, and when is all this going to happen, and what exactly are they doing?
John Schneider from Community Development can help answer some of those questions.
Hi. There's going to be a Plan Commission meeting, the Urbana Plan Commission, on September 6th that will discuss that, and as part of that, the documents will be made available on the website, and if you give me your contact information, I can get them sent to you. The other thing we would advise is if you're a resident of the City of Champaign, Champaign also has to review this project, and probably a lion's share of the project is located in the city limits of Champaign. There's the section that we're talking about, we'd have to rezone an annex, is a very small section north of actually the part that's mostly in Champaign, and then there's a section of it in Urbana adjacent to Carver Park, but that's more behind Mount Olive Church.
Yeah, that's about where I'm at. That's the reason why I'm concerned.
Right. So, what we'd advise is to attend the Plan Commission meeting, 7:00 on September 6th, that will be this Thursday, right here in the council chambers, and then you can, I think you can ask questions at that time, and then our staff will be available as well.
Okay, and that's open to the public, right?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Is a similar meeting being held in Champaign?
I'm sure they would have to hold one in Champaign, especially, I mean, and the other part of it is, you can always contact your council representative and provide input through that avenue, but we always recommend people contact the planning staff at the City of Champaign to find out when that meeting will be, if there is one.
This is related to an apartment complex that's being proposed that would literally cross city boundaries, so it's between Champaign and Urbana, but the bulk-
Right, because I am right directly on the line.
Yeah.
My house is here, there's a cornfield, and then there's I-74, so that would directly impact me, so.
Well, I'd suggest coming to or listening to the Plan Commission Thursday. There's, we're continuing the public hearing here in Urbana to next Monday, September 10th, so there'll be an opportunity to come back next Monday and provide testimony, and then I would contact your city council representative in Champaign for further information and to provide input that way.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Just also, to clarify for you, that would be Clarissa Foreman for your district, which is CC1 or District 1, and then all the at-large members in the City of Champaign, Will Kyles, Matt Gladney, I blink, uh-
I don't know Will Kyles.
Yeah.
Tom Bruno.
And Tom Bruno, would all be people that you could reach out to.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other persons wishing to address the council? Okay. There's no unfinished business. Reports of standing committees, you should have a corrected agenda which states that Councilmember Aaron Ammons chaired the Committee of the Whole.
Yes.
Yes, please.
So, on behalf of the Committee of the Whole, I would move Resolution Number 2018-08040R, Resolution for Improvement by Municipality Under the Illinois Highway Code MCOR Project 5, Green Street from west of Bucie to Ray Street PE2, to council with recommendation for approval.
I will second that.
Moved by Aaron, seconded by Dean. Any discussion? Bill?
I was looking for the line item in the budget, and I talked to Elizabeth a little bit before the meeting, but I wondered if we could just get clarification on whether this is an increase in the capital improvement plan for this project, and will another project have to be decreased, or is this in line with what we approved in May for the capital improvement plan? I think the budget that we approved, our budget book, doesn't go to the same level of detail as what this budget line item refers to, so it was hard for me, it's really impossible to figure out.
Probably best that I get that answer to you. I don't have that answer with me tonight.
Okay. And so, this is all for engineering and property acquisition?
Correct.
And do we do any of that engineering in-house, or it's all contracted?
Most of it is all contracted out. There'll be some engineering staff that'll be involved with the acquisition of easements and right-of-way and that sort of thing. The dollars were identified in the capital improvement plan, but you're asking about in the budget, so I'd have to confirm that.
Yeah, I just, I looked at the capital improvement plan, it looked like there was a $455,000 item that I'm concerned might be now going to $600,000, and that $145,000 would have to come from someplace else, but there's nothing I can do about it, but I would like to know.
Well, the source is state motor fuel tax-
Right.
...funds, so this is an allocation in this resolution that says city council's endorsing this appropriation of motor fuel tax monies to pay for this, these fees. So, if that's your question, yes.
Okay, so it sounds like it might be coming-
That's the source of revenues, and-
So, is any of this rebudgeted from last year, do you know?
No, this is, we, this is starting-
Okay.
PE2 professional engineering, it's a design phase now. The preliminary design, Phase 1, was completed a few years ago now, so the capital improvement plan was put together many months ago, but actually negotiating the final fees was closer to $600,000, not $450,000.
Okay.
So, it's state motor fuel tax money, which is available, and so it appropriate those dollars for these services.
Okay, so it sounds like some other project is either going to have to get a cut or delayed or something?
It's a delay, yes.
And I know you don't have a lot longer time with us?
Yes.
So, as long as you're here, I'd take advantage of asking you, and your experience over the past 10 years or so, has our capacity, our engineering capacity to do projects like this in-house increased, decreased, stayed about the same?
Historically, our capacity is not there to do projects like this. They're, when we get into multi-million dollars, it's just too much of an impact to our limited staff to do all the other projects that we do every year. The one exception, and it was an experiment and it worked, but it was just too impactful, was the High Cross Road to Meyer, Philo Road, design was done in-house, and we staffed up some additional people, we hired, if you will, for contract purposes, a two-year or three-year, I forget now, that they were here on a term to augment the engineering resources, and we did that project, but it's too much, too much to do. So, yeah, when you get into the multi-million dollars, the High Cross Road, the Upian Drive, Lincoln Avenue, in this case here, this project, Green Street, it's too much for in-house forces.
Okay. It seemed like we used to have more engineering staff, was that just-
Oh, that part is true. We have vacancies.
Okay.
Yes, we've had a 10-month vacancy of a, I'll call it a senior civil engineer or civil engineer, too. And just as an update, we just did some interviews last week, and we think we're close to maybe hiring someone, but it's not going to be someone with the five to 10-year or more years of service, because we're just not being successful in finding those candidates. They're pretty tough to find right now.
Okay. Thanks a lot.
By the way, if that answers your question, yes, it's more than what we thought in the capital improvement plan, because we didn't have a finalized agreement or scope. There will be a lot of easements needed on this project, and that's going to take some time and effort to do.
Okay, yep, that was very helpful. Thanks.
Any other questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. That motion passes.
Ordinance Number 2018-08-056, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance, budget amendment number two, on behalf of committee, I so move.
Second. Moved by Aaron, seconded by Mary Alice. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
City council members Ammons.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Hazen.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Wu.
Yes.
Mayor Marlin.
Yes. That motion passes.
Ordinance Number 2018-08-057, colon, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 3, Section 3-43, increasing the number of Class G1 liquor licenses for Urbana Gardens Restaurant, Inc., DBA Urbana Gardens Family Restaurant, 18 Kalani Street, Urbana, Illinois, on behalf of the committee, I so move.
Second.
Moved by Aaron, seconded by Eric. I did want to provide some information that was requested by council. Tonight, we handed out the information on your dais. You should have a map showing the current locations that have G1 liquor licenses. As you recall, in order to get a gaming license, you also have to have a liquor license. So, G1 liquor licenses are those establishments that are bars, restaurants, veterans organizations that have video gaming terminals, and they're allowed up to, to have up to five terminals per location. So, the red stars are the active G1 establishments with gaming terminals. The blue stars are the G2 gaming halls or gaming parlors. These are the standalone parlors that also can have five machines. And then the yellow star is the proposed location, Urbana Gardens Restaurant. They're requesting a G1 liquor license, so they're an existing restaurant, and they're requesting the addition of gaming terminals. Also included, I thought, just for your information, we've also included the applicant's license name, and also the site name and address of all the gaming, all the locations that have gaming terminals in the City of Urbana. We ran the revenue report for fiscal year 2018 from the Illinois Gaming Board, which shows you the individual establishments and the revenues generated in each one, and you'll see that the municipality's share of the revenue amounted to $335,207 in fiscal year 2018. As you recall, the city gets 5% of the revenue, the state gets 25%, and then the remaining 70% is split evenly between the video game terminal owner and the establishment operator. And then the last page in your packet is a single-month revenue report for July of 2018, and this just shows the, well, just this past month of July, but it's got the current licensed locations where, that hold both G1 and G2 licenses. So, kind of give you an overview of the video game landscape of today. Aaron?
So, I was one of the, I don't know if someone else had requested this as well, but I wanted to see the concentration of the terminals and the halls. So, and just to reiterate, the terminals are restaurants that, or businesses such as a restaurant, that has up to five terminals.
The red stars are restaurants, bars, like the American Legion, that sort of establishment, yeah. And then the blue are the standalone video parlors.
And so, the pending location is North Lincoln, basically, right? On Kalani?
Correct, Urbana Gardens.
There'll be one of each in that concentrated area, in the North Lincoln area?
Well, actually, there will be two G1s, and then there's a G2.
Okay, right, because the yellow star is pending.
Right, the other one is in the former Wyndham Garden Hotel, which has recently changed ownership.
And the blue one is the little small place that used to be the gas station?
Yeah, it's Lacy's.
Right. And then, so this area that I see is a concentration of nine, five of the G1s and four of the G2s. I'm not quite, I know, that's got to be University Avenue, right there?
Correct, yeah.
And so, what are the, and those places, I know you have the list, but I don't know exactly where they are.
Either downtown, so we've got gambling terminals in, for example, the Blackbird, Bunny's, the American Legion, those red stars are clustered around downtown, and then the parlors-
The three red stars are clustered around downtown?
Yeah.
Okay. And then the other two?
And if you recall, our zoning ordinance, one of the things when the council debated the whole issue of video gaming terminal, we limited their, for the parlors, anyway, we limited their location to the B3 general business zoning district, so you're going to see them clustered in our B3 areas, which is what you see in the Sunny Crest area, further south there.
The three down at the bottom, the-
Yeah.
Okay, I wanted to see them as far as just how they map out on the, on our sort of, our grid, so to speak, but I do think there's a discussion that needs to be had about, like, is there going to be a limit for us on how many of these? I see the revenue that it's producing, and I understand that, but I still think there should be a conversation around just how many of these are we going to have.
I would, yeah, I understand. I would point out that we did have, we're actually compared to last fiscal year where 24 establishments had the video gaming terminals. With this new one, we will have 23, because one was, the license was transferred from the old Wyndham to the new hotel in the same place, and then Milo's closed, so the overall number of establishments is actually one less than it was last year. But, but yeah, each of these licenses, and that's another process that we included when we approved the ordinance for video gaming, was each license would be individually approved by the council.
Okay.
Bill?
Yeah, thanks for providing the revenue report. I think the total I find interesting always is the net wagering activity, so-
It's astonishing.
That's the difference between what was played and what was won, so that's $6.7 million that left the community, basically, from gambling. Some of it came back, and $330,000 came back in taxes, but that's a lot of money that's leaving the community, and it's up to the, as far as these G1s go, I just feel like it's up to each business. They're basically competing with themselves, they have the terminals in their restaurant. The people are probably either going to spend money at the restaurant or gambling, and if they lose all their money gambling, they won't come back to the restaurant, so it's their loss. I know Milo's closed, Backrock Pizza closed, Corkscrew closed. I know Gardens, Urbana Gardens has been thinking about this for a long time, they've had their license approved by the state for a long time, so I'm not surprised, but hopefully they just know their clientele, and whether they can afford this, maybe this is something their particular clientele is asking for, so I'm not, I'm not opposed to these kind of, these kind of operations.
And given the location, it's right on the interstate and in the middle of all those hotels, so I would expect a certain portion of the clientele's passing through the community or visiting the community, too, so. Aaron?
So, Bill, when you say this $6 million left the community, why, why did you say it left the community?
Well, most of it goes to the state, 25, well, half of, 70% gets split between the, the business owner and the game provider-
Terminal owner.
-terminal owners. Most of the terminal owners are in the community. There's one in Champaign that has some of the terminals, I don't know if that's, if that's the terminal operator that Urbana Gardens is using, but most of them aren't local. So, some of it, I guess, goes to help pay rent by the, by the business, so 35% is kept by the business, but 25% goes directly to the state. It goes into capital improvement projects all over the state, including Chicago and most of the collar counties that don't even allow video terminal gambling, so they're getting a lot of money back that, you know, they don't even pay into. So, I'd say it's fair to say most of the money's leaving the community, most of that $6.7 million. Probably a lot more than if it had been spent on restaurant food, where, you know, there's employees providing the service.
So, and maybe this is a question, Mayor, that we need to ask some state officials? I'd be happy to ask those questions to some state officials.
Do you know?
I know a couple.
Okay.
But I don't understand why we would have so much money being generated for other cities that we don't receive, I mean, for them to, for their capital improvement projects, and we need it for ours. Is there, under the home rule, I guess I'm asking, is there any way for us to earmark or to, something, some sort of advocacy for us to be able to have some say in where that money goes or how it's used outside, I mean, so that it comes back here?
Well, per the state law, the only part of it we have control over is the 5% that we get, which is the $300,000, I think we budgeted about $300,000. That goes to the general fund, so we can use it for, for day-to-day core functions and services of the city. By law, the state gets 25% personally, well, I won't say 25%, and then 70% of it is, again, split between the business owners and the terminal owners.
Right, I get it, and that's why I'm wondering from, should there be some advocacy from municipalities around changing that, especially if that money is going to places that don't allow it? So, we allow it, and then they get the money for their capital improvement projects, that doesn't quite make sense to me, but, you know.
Yeah, interesting question. Something to ask a candidate. Yes.
Yeah, I'd just say, as a county, I think we fare pretty well in the capital, usually the capital plans, because U of I gets a lot of money for, for things. But, yeah, as far as, especially Cook County, if you can get legislators to vote against Cook County, I suppose that would be a good thing to do, because they have their own gambling, but as far as this, that particular revenue stream from the video terminals, it's supposed to be funding one of the Build Illinois, or one of the, one of the capital projects, yeah, they get money from that.
And I will report, there was concern when we first considered this about safety, et cetera, and especially around the gambling, gaming parlors, and really, there's no problem. We've had no problems whatsoever, so they've been very quiet and law-abiding. Dean?
I think we will eventually have a problem. I'm, I will vote for it, because I don't see any legal basis to, I don't see any basis to not vote for this, other than the fact that I don't like it. Two or three weeks ago in Decatur, a man was killed for $150, leaving one of these establishments. There's been several robberies, most of them up by Chicago, but it does eventually come back to bite us, but like I said, I don't have any legal reason to vote against it, but I think we should all keep this in mind as we consider how many of these we can tolerate. Anytime there's that much money going around, there's going to be an issue.
Eric?
Just a very brief comment to remind that when we were debating our initial ordinances on what to do with the, with this gambling, one of the very most important things in many people's minds, including mine, was that if Champaign permitted these establishments, and we did not, that over time, the restaurant business would simply up and move entirely to Champaign if we didn't permit restaurants to install gaming terminals, and, and that's still a very, I think, with respect to our own posture on this, I think that is still a very cogent point.
Urbana took the middle ground in crafting this ordinance.
We did, we decided, I mean, we didn't, we, it could have been the Wild West, we could have not controlled it at any level, and we did put in controls to, for example, you know, distance them from each other and so forth, and it was, it was hard for me, because I do, I am cognizant of the fact that for a significant number of people, gambling is a problem, and that includes gambling on these machines, and, and it was very hard, you know, to, to vote in such a fashion as to condone this, and certainly the vast, the great majority of communications that I had from individuals was to prohibit these machines in Urbana, and I had to look on the other side as to what it would do to our tax base and revenue stream to hemorrhage restaurants across Wright Street- to our tax base and revenue stream to hemorrhage restaurants across Wright Street to Urbana, what it would do to our ability to provide services to our community, but it's, it's, yeah, it's kind of ugly.
Okay. Are we, any further comments? Will the clerk please call the roll?
City Councilmembers, Ammons?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Hazen?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Wu?
Yes.
That motion passes. Reports of special committees, there's none, reports of officers. Carol?
Thank you, I have two things I'd like to share with the council and the public. The first is, we're trying to help amplify the message around Champaign County Amnesty Week, which is if you have outstanding criminal fines or traffic fines, next week, September 10th through the 14th, any collection or late fees will be waived if you bring your entire account current, so people can find out if they have any outstanding fines by going onto the court records that you can access through the county clerk's website, and I went on there today, and it's, what's interesting about it is, whatever fines or fees you might have had to pay in the past, they're still there, you just have a zero balance, so there's interesting history there, not about me, I've been here, I haven't been here long enough. And then the second thing is just to alert you to-
Can I just ask you a quick question about that?
Sure.
Is that for, just for the individuals who qualify for the expungement, or is that for the general public?
This is for the general public.
Okay, just want to make sure we're clear.
Yes. And, and just to be, to be clear back to you, it's not expungement, it's bringing your count to zero, if there's anything related to expungement, that's a separate matter.
Oh, so, the October expungement, it's a yearly, an annual thing that we've been doing for the past three years now at Stone Creek Church, and it's coming up, so it's, this Amnesty Week is in relationship to that, that's why I was clarifying, the Amnesty Week was brought into existence because of the expungement-
Oh, okay.
-process, so I just want to make sure the public is clear about that, that's why I was asking-
You're more clear than I'm, than I am.
That's why I was asking if it was in relation, direct relationship to that, but it sounds as if it's open for the general public, whether or not you qualify for the expungement workshop that's coming behind it.
Yes, thank you, and then, just to alert the council members to the fact that you have in your inboxes, if you haven't seen it already, a list of all the boards and commissions in the city, and their decision-making authority as it relates to the council, what's highlighted there is the, are the boards and commissions that make recommendations to the council, but it's actually very interesting reading, so I anticipate that you might have questions as a result of that, and we'll be happy to answer them in due course, but just look for that if you would.
This was in response to council members' request for that list, thank you.
Yes.
And I just wanted to report that this week, we are interviewing three consulting companies for doing our programming needs assessment and facilities master plan, and we'll be selecting one later this week, and then hopefully that work will get underway shortly after that, so we're making progress there. There's no new business to consider, so with that, this meeting is adjourned, thank you.